Good evening. I'd like to call to order the audit committee meeting. You needed to start to say something? Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we have Sue Peters here from Cooper Aries, who's going to go over the findings from our internal audit. The process started over the summer, late summer actually, and then we just were able to get the draft report tidied up and hand it over to Sue.
Okay. Like Lorraine said, we came in and we interviewed everybody and what the process was because you were changing from the computer, the accounting system that you were using, which to back to the one that you'd used years ago. So there's a little confusion with that just because the old one had all those people in that had retired. So in the new system, you had like retired people that were retired and people that had passed away. So that's all going to have to be caught up. Because what we did was we took your, the list from Wincap, yeah, Wincap, and we compared it to the Envision, which is the one that you're using now. So anybody that wasn't on here, we questioned why. And then people that were on here, we questioned over here. So the ones that were here were because, like I said, they had, over here, they'd retired or passed away or whatever. But everything happened to you guys at the same time. Your payroll person went out when we got there to do this. And you were trying to catch up because as what you were doing, what they did was they were, everything got converted, the rec did that. Everything got converted and then you had to put in the salary rates. And you also had, you were waiting for contracts to be settled. So it was a multitude of things that were causing things to not go as smoothly as possible. So but, so by the time we finished, all the things were in there. We could check that what we had questions about were in there. And the business office, they were very great help, they were, you know, really helpful because your payroll person was out. So they were trying to do everything they could. Your superintendent, he was checking the payroll. I have to say, not a lot of superintendents I know that checked that. He was doing a great job of doing that. It just, it was difficult to do that. But like I said, we went through, it's really important that the payroll department and the human resource work together. You also, in the last few years, you've had several different payroll people, you know, over the last 10 years, you've had human resources change. You just had a new superintendent, new business person. So you've had three in the last, I don't know, 10 years or whatever too. So that, you know, that all is hard. But yet you've had some employees that have been there for a long time and you've dedicated employees. And you also had the treasurer change too. So there were a lot of changes. So actually, for what you guys went through, I think you did a really good job. It just took time because first the 12-month people got put in because they had to get paid first. And then the summer school people, they got put in. And then things like even normally you would do at the beginning of the year, like the buyouts, the health insurance buyouts, they weren't entered until they had to get paid. So it was just catching up is what happened. But every, like I said, everything that we had checked had been done at the end. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Okay, so in the report, like I said, we went back and forth. But then we also picked 78 people to get a good sample of what we had. And unfortunately, like I said, the substitutes, they weren't in yet. The coaching positions, those weren't in there. So like when we were checking over here, a lot of those were the coaching ones. So we were, like I said, we were able to resolve that. But when we first started out, there was, if you look on page three, there were 21 teachers that weren't in there. That was because they weren't teaching until they got put in closer to September. There was teacher aides, the same thing, substitutes. Some of them hadn't even been hired. So you also had people getting hired during the summertime, which was a lot of people. The coaches, they weren't put in till closer to September. Bus drivers, same thing, they weren't driving during the summer, so they didn't get put in. But of all the ones that we have here, the tutors, a 10-year amount, the team leader stipends, that didn't get put in until they were approved for that year. So like I said, at the end, when we were finished with it, they were all put in. And it wasn't just because we asked it, you know, why. That's not why they just put in. So I think that everything now, you know, it's going to be, have to be checked and you're going to keep finding some things because things are going to pop up. Everybody, you know, it's a human process of putting all these rates in. Like I said, there were six employees that should have been inactive in the new program. That's going to take time. You're probably still going to find some that we didn't even see. But it's important, Lorraine and I were talking about that. It's important because of seniority. You want to make sure those people that were inactive are inactive and then put back, because that time all counts. So it's going to take time to get everything all. But I think, I think everything is, you know, working okay now. Make sure I didn't miss anything else. The employee hire dates, you know, that should be checked. And probably when you go to next year, just double check that as every, as is being put in. The salary agreements, those are, like, they weren't there because they weren't put in yet. And I know you're working on it to get them all done, but you're making sure that they're correct before you send it out. And I think that's really good and you'll be able to get that done. There's one other thing I was gonna tell you. Did talk about it, okay. It's whenever there's a account, you know, a trance, a changeover, it's always difficult. I've seen districts do it July, I've seen them do it December. And it's always a problem. I know one district, the superintendent never got turned back on because his salary was over for the cutoff for social security and Medicare. And it didn't get switched back on because of, there was also a change there too. So things happen like that. You didn't have that happen here. But it's, it's difficult. So you're back into the program that you know, you're familiar with, you're all more familiar with. So I think going forward, you're going to be fine. Payroll is a tough place anyway. And like I said, it just is really important that payroll and human resource work together. That's the most important thing to get out of this. And, you know, I think they're doing well, but I, you know, it's going to take time. But because you have good employees that, you know, kept trying to make sure everything was right, and you were lucky that you had people that knew the payroll as your payroll person was out, which is important too. So I don't know, do you have any questions about the process or what we did? Basically, we picked people, we tested to make sure that they had, we looked at last year's Wincap's salary agreements and made sure that the rate in the new year made sense with the contract. That's basically what is being done in the office too. So we didn't find any difference with that. Everything, everything that we had a question about was explained and it was, if there was any issues, it was fixed. So.
I just had a question. I mean, typically, you run, do you run monthly or quarterly exception reports? So that you can find- Actually, do it every payroll. Okay. So I've implemented that since I've started to ask payroll person run the report. And it's called a change report. So what's the difference between the prior pay period and the current pay period? Because that's where you'll find anything jumping off the page. And so far, so good. We found a couple of things, but we were able to correct them if payroll was run. So that's something that once she returned from break, be implemented. I feel like we've implemented also controls in place. And it's not an official checklist, but how things are entered now. So after the board meeting, HR will enter the information for the people, for the staff on the HR side. And then payroll will go in and make sure that they're turned on to be paid. And then make sure that we have all the paperwork now for deductions and different reasons for deductions, dues and whatnot, as well as benefits. So it has been a challenge to get all of that in from Wincap because they couldn't do it automatically for us. You know, some systems can load from one software company or brand to another. They could not do that for us. And we didn't learn of this until it was summertime, really, when they told us, we can't do that for you. So next thing you know, we're, I call it triage work. So we were entering the 12 months first, then the summer school, then the teachers, whoever was going to get paid next, we were constantly entering. I feel like it was, it was, it was a rough time to audit it, certainly.
Right.
But it also helped us to make sure that we have the right controls in place now moving forward, even though it's a new system, but it's an old system we used to use. But we do have new people in different positions. We want to make sure everything's getting checked as we go. I'm just kind of, I'm kind of thinking out loud. So if I'm an employee, is there something like on a yearly basis or anything that sends to me, just a one like at a glance? This is what we have for your original hire date, this is what we have as your- like, is there something like that? Or they just check in their pay stubs so that they can make sure it's accurate? Especially since we've switched over, just to make sure. So we do do salary agreements and I don't think they're starting. So maybe we should then, because we didn't release them yet this year because we wanted them to be as close to correct. And we've done a lot of checking, HR andrea's worked really hard to make sure that they're accurate. So we plan to send those out hopefully this month. Enter the date on there. I know longevity shows up on there. So that sort of gives them an idea, you know, where they would fall within the range at least. But that, that does help and they can also check stubs, so. And out of curiosity too, sorry. With their stub, can we maybe, you probably, you probably already did this, just like a quick note saying, A, we changed over to this new system. Can you please double check everything? And if you have any questions, here's who to contact. Yes, we've done that actually with emails. And also, we went to direct, our direct deposit stubs went to email. And we've changed the email now to include more information that I didn't know we could until recently. So in Envision, we could put a note on there on who to contact if they have questions about attendance, because we also print attendance on there, or their salary. We've also broken down their salary items on the check stubs as well. So it's not just one lump sum, which is what we started with in the beginning. Different stipends.
Challenge that we had in the conversion that I wish, looking back at which we had done differently. Because we were an Envision client before, we get supported through the BOCs. They talked us into, instead of basically building a new platform, basically building on top of what we already had, which really caused a lot of data issues that we had to go back one, literally one by one by one. We're still correcting some of those issues. In retrospect, we should have just built a new platform. Would have been a little bit more work and perhaps some of that data would have transferred a little bit more cleanly. But hindsight's 20-20. We tried to take their advice. They've done these conversions before, took their advice.
Does Envision have a, an online account for the staff members where they can simply log in, they can do, they can see everything at a snapshot?
Like Wincap does.
Yeah, like Wincap does.
They're working on it? I don't think it's as good as Wincap because you can see, you can even-
Yeah, you-
Your W2s from-
You could do, yeah, your W2 salary agreements, everything's done through there.
And change your withholdings too, if I remember right.
Yeah, I was just, yeah. And so I was just wondering if Envision had it or if they were, so they're, they're working on it.
Yeah.
Because that's a, that's a good feature where you just log in and everything's right there.
Right, yeah.
Attendance, all that jazz, yeah.
It exists. I just want to make sure our data is as-
Accurate first.
As accurate as it can be.
I don't know if it's as, yeah, thank you, as Wincap is, but it does have some.
Ironically, from the backend, from an HR management standpoint, while their forward-facing platform for employees was probably a little bit healthier, they literally had nothing on the other side for human resource management. I couldn't get an employee headcount, I couldn't get seniority reports. It was so cumbersome and clunky to work with, where in vision, it's single click to be able to get so many of those reports. It's that much easier to work on the backend.
And I know there's positives.
Yeah.
Just simply asking if that was-
Yeah.
Yeah, we would like to move towards it, yeah.
Just to kind of piggyback off of that, like what does the timeline look like till you think all the data is accurate and in and?
Pretty soon. I mean, she's been going through each person in the files and everything. So pulling each folder and looking and-
We had a, sorry, we had a pre-DM sub in that was working, who has payroll experience, was working with her. And they were literally pulling file by file, matching what was in the hard copy personnel file and what was in the system. As Lorraine said, we both, we've both been watching closely. I think within the next month, they should be-
Next month, please.
Pretty accurate where we feel confident.
Okay. Do we have a timetable then for like another audit to come in? Would it be safe to say like March timeframe? Yeah, I would like to get back on track.
Right, we can start really soon to do the update. That's-
That's true.
Whenever you are ready. You know, they're doing some of the test work for the towns and things, but whenever, you know, we can come in pretty soon, yeah.
Great, that would be nice too.
At least to get that update one done and then we can talk about what, I don't know if you have any idea about the focusing next time, but at least get that part done and set up the date, yeah.
I almost like to put it out there for you to think about is the lunch fund. Maybe looking at that next time because the lunch fund? Because now we've gone from free meals and very good fund balance and we're going to look at losing that fund balance quickly. Now students have to pay. I know there's hope that the state will provide free meals again, but if they don't, then at least we could be ahead of the curve, maybe do some planning.
It's been a while since we looked at the lunch.
Is it?
Yeah, we did. We looked at the cash receipt portion, I remember. I'm trying to think what else we're getting here, really early in the morning, to look at that, to see how the cash receipt was. But that might be, you know, to look at, yeah, whatever, whatever you think. It's been a while.
It's a good place to look considering how far the school went.
We did look a little at when you had that money coming, we were looking, during COVID, when you had to check and it was pretty good. I mean, there were all, every, every district had a problem with that. Because there was not a lot of guidance and every district does things differently and distributed the food different, you know. But I think they had a good handle, but it certainly would not hurt to look at that. Okay.
Anyone have any other questions? Last comments? Thank you, Sue.
Okay.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Would you like to close the audit committee meeting? Noted at 6:15. Thanks.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Goshen Central School District, tonight, Monday, January ninth. Tonight's meeting is being held in the Administration Building and livestreamed through YouTube. Next on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance and a Moment of Meditation. Please keep in mind the passing of James Wolfe, a retired physical education teacher and former interim Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics for our district. Next on the agenda is Privilege of the Floor. We do not have anyone signing up tonight, so I will forego reading the policy. Next on the agenda is the President's Report. What I have on my report is that we have been able to fill the active board, the committees. So just to go over those quickly, on technology, we have Billy, Tom, and Brett. Safety Committee will be Tom Loftus, Jason Pucci, and Brett Whedon. The Audit Committee will stay the same with Billy, Shannon, and myself. The Policy Committee will now include Tom Loftus and Brett Whedon and myself. NISBA would be Shannon Johnson and Tom Loftus. And the Orange County School Board's Legislative Advocate is Tom Loftus, and with the alternate as Brett Whedon. And the Negotiations Committee is Shannon, Jason, and Brett. I do need a motion to approve these. Shannon and Billy, be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the revised list of the Board Committees for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. All in favor? That is all that I have for my report. Next on the agenda is the Legislative Update, and that's Tom Loftus.
The forthcoming meeting is this week, so I'll have an update for you guys at the next meeting.
Easy, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Curtis Coats.
Thank you, Mrs. Salti. First, I wanted to discuss with the Board, late in November, the Board had heard two presentations from both Erie One Policy Services and NISBA Policy Services. Part of our Board goals and objectives for this year included a policy audit and potential addition of a regulations manual. We were just seeking direction from the Board on whether or not we wanted to move forward with either service, as we discussed during the presentation on both services. We have had Erie One for a period of time, however, in the region, we have seen some school districts start to move over to the New York State School Board Association Service. But tonight, we were just looking for direction from the Board, if there is a recommendation on where you would like to proceed, so we can begin the audit.
Can I just ask the Board members, are you prepared to move ahead with one of the vendors? Okay. We could roundtable and just say who you would like to, or are we in agreement with the vendor? We're in agreement with NISBA? So we'd like to follow NISBA.
Yes, we'll start to reach out to them tomorrow, whether we need to do any new formal agreements with them, and get some guidance on next steps. Thank you very much for that. So I am pleased to report, also, we have received our cost estimates for the capital improvement project at Scotstown Avenue for the summer. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to meet with Land, Girard Associates, and the representatives from Trane to review not only the cost estimates, but the narrative of the scope of work that is included in there. We are somewhat optimistic about what we are seeing, but don't want to really discuss anything further until we've had an opportunity to review verbatim what they are explaining in the proposal. A first look at the budget, we are somewhat optimistic, as I said, we're going to get all of the scope of work done that we discussed with the community. But again, we want to review that very closely, and we should be able, based on the information that they're sharing with us right now and availability of equipment, be able to move forward with that during the summer of 2023 as well. We'll have more information on that after our meeting tomorrow, be able to continue to share that. If that information is everything that we have discussed to date, because we are part of the OMNI cooperative bid, we do not have to put the equipment and the labor out to bid, we'll be able to move forward with procurement right away. That was part of the benefit of going to the cooperative bid cycle. So today, Mr. Fries and Ms. Lammer and I were discussing how to store that equipment. Obviously, it comes early. Again, this will go in tandem with the roof project that is scheduled to go on at Scotstown this summer as well. Again, all of this seems to be looking very positive right now. I want to draw to the Board's attention a bill that the Governor signed. So, as you know, there are many different pilots that come across for your approval on resolution on a regular basis, the biggest one in the district right now being the Legoland pilot. In addition to that, we have some new warehouses that could be on the books. We have many different solar pilots that are on the books. Some of the greatest challenges that we have had over time with the pilot agreements is when the pilot agreements expire. And what we have seen a track record of is when those pilot agreements expire, without notice, the property owners have been able to go in and challenge the assessed value of their properties. The most recent that we've dealt with has been our portion of the Galleria Mall, to the tune of several million dollars in tax refunds that we had to give when they came off. To date, IDAs and any of these pilots have not had to share any of their intent with municipal agencies, including school districts. This new legislation that the Governor has signed basically gives more notification, more lead time from what we can see in the legislation, to school districts to be able to plan for this. We have to look at how we are going to fund these refunds when they come up. We have to look at how we are going to plan for this for the future. We have to look at our tax surcharge reserve to make sure that we don't get caught off guard with any of these. Obviously, if our tax surcharge reserve fund was to run down, we'd either have to look at refunding this through the operating budget, or we'd have to borrow to be able to pay those tax certs back. And we don't want to be in that position. So this legislation will help us. I've had some communication today with our newest elected state officials, trying to get some more depth on the language of this legislation, just so I'm not looking at just the high-level summary from the Governor's office. But again, this information on the surface looks positive for us as a school district as well. Finally, we have had fourteen community members sign up to become members of the Facilities Advisory Committee. I'm going to welcome Mrs. Gore to schedule our first meeting for the twenty-fifth at six p.m. In doing that, the goal will be to allow the volunteers to get an in-depth look at what we are dealing with in terms of not just maintenance, but potential renovations to our facilities in the future. We're going to talk extensively with them about how we fund ongoing maintenance and any potential capital work. And the ultimate goal will be to have one of those committee members report back to the Board before you are required to adopt a budget this year on what were their findings, what might be their recommendations and priorities for the Board. Obviously, how we pay for those things and how we fund those things are the responsibilities of the Board and the administration, but we need to do that with public input. And we're hopeful that this process will give them an opportunity to see what it is we look at and how we're faced with how we fund those renovations that are necessary and that maintenance that is necessary at the same time. I think we're very fortunate with the cross-section. We have two people that are private business owners that signed up. We have several parents. We have a few staff members that signed up, so we have a very good cross-section of volunteers that are on the committee. With that, that is my report for the evening. Mrs. Salti, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coats. Next on the agenda, we are going to switch speakers around a little bit. We will have the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, Personnel, and Technology Report go first. Mr. Jason Carter, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Salti. Good evening, everyone. Before we get into the presentation, I just want to take a moment to mention that Dr. Coats and I had the opportunity last Friday to attend the Scotstown Avenue Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program launch. It was in the gymnasium. I would like to say it was a very exciting moment for us. We had some of our K-1-2 students, or actually, all of our K-1-2 students, rather excited for their new PAWS program. So in this particular launch program, we had GIS students who arrived from Mrs. Crop's class to put on some skits to thoroughly explain each of the steps to achieve greatness and success at Scotstown. More importantly, they were able to show each step in action. You know, a lot of laughs, a lot of giggles, a lot of smiles, and that's the most important piece there. Our students did a wonderful job. We also had the GHS cheer team there to provide some support, a lot of great cheers, really got the crowd going, so we were grateful for that as well. And the Scotty mascot made an appearance, which is always nice to see. So we had a little Scotty running around. We're not going to tell you who was running around in the suit. I'm almost certain it was a little hot in there as well. But it was a great program today in the cafeteria. They also went through what it's like to have positive behavior in the cafeteria, and spoke of earning the little paw prints that can be redeemed for reward. So this is a great positive program at Scotstown. I want to take a moment to thank Ms. Driscoll and the Scotstown team, of course, Mrs. Crop and all of her students, the GHS cheer team, and all of those who had a part in organizing this and collaborating to make it happen. So we're very grateful.
For the record, Mr. Carter was trying to size up if he would fit in the Scotty uniform, but Mrs. Driscoll just outright refused.
I'm aiming for the Gladiator suit personally. So this is a perfect segue. We have some of our teachers from Goshen Intermediate School with us to give you a short presentation on Choose Love and how that's been going at the Goshen Intermediate School. This is a part of our character and social emotional learning program at GIS and throughout the district. Dr. Wentworth has chosen a few of his teachers who we believe are doing a great job, as many are in the building and in the classrooms. You know, this promotes positive attitude, it promotes positive relationships, and these are really all of the attributes and characteristics that we wish to promote even through our PBIS program. So without further delay, we can have some of our teachers come up with Dr. Wentworth and Mrs. Rohrson. That would be great.
Okay, so thank you for having us tonight. Get started with the presentation. One thing I wanted to do, kind of give a quick overview, certainly after the pandemic, we've noticed the need for a little bit more support for the students' social emotional well-being. The district adopted the Choose Love program at the beginning of last school year, and we started looking at it, and some of the staff came knocking on my door, or I should probably say barging in, saying, "We want to get this started. We want to get rolling with it." So I'm not taking any credit for it tonight. This is truly the Choose Love team here at GIS that was able to put this together and get it implemented and running. So I'm going to let the experts kind of explain, and then we're going to see if this is working correctly.
Thank you for having us. Why Choose Love? So to understand why Choose Love, we must understand where it originated from. Scarlett Lewis is the founder. Her son, Jesse, was one of the victims of Sandy Huck. So because of this devastating event, she realized that our children need social emotional learning support. She developed this research-based program, and she realized that it was able to spread internationally. Scarlett wanted to have a program that empowers students to understand and to cope with their emotions, and to ensure that all children are seen and validated. This provides students with a toolbox of these essential skills, so the students learn how to have relationship-building, communication skills, emotional management, coping skills. So through the Choose Love, our schools can provide appropriate behavioral interventions, and this will support our children. We've learned that the students that feel safe and have a sense of belonging are more successful in their academic endeavors. And we have a few of the pictures, a few that's there. Sorry, that's okay. So the next slide shows Choose Love annually collects survey-based program evaluation data for quality improvement purposes. So some of the highlights, we're not going to read all of that, but some of the highlights that we chose, seventy-three percent of the educators reported students show less aggression and more self-emotional control. Eighty-four percent reported an improvement in classroom climate since using Choose Love, and eighty-one percent reported an improvement in students' behavior since using Choose Love. There's a whole bunch of other data on there that supports the...
So at GIS, we really have incorporated Choose Love across our entire building. So you will see on here that we have posters in the hallway that connect to some of the literature that we read, as well as to some of the themes about having your bucket and filling up your bucket and feeling good about yourself and other people. Don't be a dipper and, you know, dip into somebody else's bucket and spread negativity. It definitely, you know, has the theme that it's in our hallway, it's on our bulletin boards, and we have had the posters made that really connect to the four components of Choose Love. So we have four units that we focus on: courage, gratitude, forgiveness, and compassion, and action. And then wrapping those together, it is Choose Love. So we have these posters that are in all of our classrooms. We have them in the hallway, and it really just, you know, builds unity across the whole building for the teachers and the staff and the students to know that this is really a huge focus for us, and that it is about empowering the students and who they are and their emotions and their social well-being. We also will even start with brave breaths is a huge piece of what a lot of the lessons start with. And each of the four components have different breaths that kind of focus them in a different area, but it really allows our classrooms individually to stop and to take a breath. And I love that we started with meditation here today, because that's really what we are encouraging our students to do, is focus in, you know, pull together your energy and your inner self, and then that puts your best out into the world. When we came barging to Matt's door, we really, like, knew that we wanted to pull the components in lots of different areas. So luckily, the Choose Love program really did most of it for us. Like, it is a very well-adapted program that works from preschool all the way up till twelfth grade, and it is completely laid out for us on what we have to do. And we were able to really take the program and push it right into the classrooms in a very seamless transaction, I would say. So we have the slides, which are right from our Choose Love program. The visuals match up with all of our lessons that we have. So the slides really incorporate a lot of videos. They have, you know, questions that we pose to students, and it really allows us to pull it up, be ready to go, and then it's there... it up, be ready to go, and then it's there for that communication and for the building relationships with our students. We have a journal. That is the example at the top, and the journal is just a reflection piece that we use throughout various lessons. And then we created, for each of the grades at GIS, we have a Google Classroom, and that really allows the staff to really connect with each other. We have all of our lessons there, but we have, you know, different pieces that we've created or different pieces that we've added in, so that way we're really working together for each grade level to keep that unity from three to five, so that way the students do see it when they come in in third, and then they see those same pieces when they're still in fifth grade. And a lot of that is seamless, and we work within our grade levels to kind of build that up. And this is my favorite piece of the Choose Love program, is really the ELA components and the diversity that it pulls across the entire program. So a lot of the lessons have books, and we have purchased the books, and we have videos of the books being read to the students, and they really allow us to kind of stop and make connections with characters from the books or make connections with the themes and the morals of the different books. Moody Cow is just a funny book on, like, how your emotions can take over and that everybody is a moody cow sometimes. And when you really just pull it in to center yourself and take a minute of a brave breath or take a minute of meditation, it really lets you reflect and have a better outcome for yourself. That has a great activity that goes with it. But it really allows our program to really connect with worldly concepts. It's very diverse, and the themes in there are really what the students just can stop and enjoy a book, and we get to kind of connect with it. So the ELA is my favorite piece.
Jumped a slide by accident.
I think you did. That's okay.
Or we lost it. All right, jump down here. Hold on. No? We lost a slide. That's okay.
That's okay.
Do you want to go over the journal? Do you want to talk about the journal writing?
Yes, so there was one other picture. I did mention the journal writing, but the journal writing is another piece that connects with the ELA, and it really allows our students to have a reflection and a connection to their inner self and write about it. And I think that that's a huge positivity for them to, you know, take one of the books that we spoke about and then have a simple question, you know, how do you connect with that character? Or how have you felt after somebody, you know, hurt your feelings? And it just allows our students to, you know, connect in a written form, and it doesn't have to be perfect, which is nice for a journal aspect. It really just lets them have a reflection. It lets them make a connection, and it really helps that healthy factor of just sitting and thinking and reflecting on their social factors, their emotional factors, and their connections with the world. And then when we can stop and share the journals together, we're really, you know, building communication and eye contact and allowing our students to, you know, have those discussions that are just positive and reflecting on maybe a negative situation and then turning it around and seeing how it can be better.
Yeah, so I'll start this next section just by saying that working with the staff at GIS, this is like every principal's dream, to have a staff come to you and say, "Hey, we want to get this going." And not only that, they have truly, they're not even giving themselves a credit of what they've actually done. They've created all sorts of resources. They've tapped into what is already up on the Choose Love website. So really, when we began the implementation piece, certainly, we were taking a look, you know, we did begin last year. One of the pieces we rolled out was how do we get this so that our staff understands it as well? It's not an overall, you know, everything new is a little bit nerve-wracking, right? So what the team decided to do is at the faculty meetings, they went through all of the different type of meditation, breathing, mindfulness moments. So the brave breath is one of them that they've talked about, but we did that with the entire staff. We did activities with them. You can see the bookmark on the bottom left there that was kind of a model from Choose Love. We worked with Bosie's to help get those printed so that every student has it on the backside are the components of Choose Love. And as I walk around the building, as I'm doing observations, as I'm walking in and out, I see these things happening with the kids, and honestly, it's kind of nice sometimes to walk in and stop and do the brave breath with them and just listen to the way the teachers talk with them, that social emotional piece and kind of an option when they're feeling overwhelmed has been great to watch. We've also integrated into our discipline and behavior conversations. So we have the posters up in our offices, so when the students are in there speaking with us, we can go through some of those components. You know, you see kids get very upset and angry, so we can have that conversation of, well, let's take a look, what can we forgive in this situation? That's within your control to be able to forgive something that's happening. We have begun really integrating them into our theme weeks, which we've been doing for years, but now we're trying to just get all of these components tied together. Every day in our announcements, we also have quotes being read that go along with our themes and our family newsletter. We are trying to incorporate pieces. There's a whole section that families can sign up for for free online on the web, and we're taking components of that to share out in the newsletter. But families can also access all of that for free and give some resources for home as well. Just, this is one of those pieces where they're not giving themselves enough credit, but across all grade levels, we have scope and sequence that has been developed, and they did this over the summer curriculum writing that was supported by the district. And this is a lot of work that they may look very, very easy, but is incredibly helpful, and they've got everything tied right in. These are also tied to the Google Classroom, so the teachers all have that information ready to go for them. And then this is kind of the outline of the yearly plan. We took the different components. We broke it down into how many lessons there are for each component and then broke it out over the year. A lot of these lessons take a couple days to get through. We give it about 15 to 20 minutes a day if we're possible, but we are finding that sometimes you invest that time upfront to help students and you save time on the backend, because we're seeing students being able to handle some of their emotions, some of their conflicts with peers a little bit better because of it. Lisa, take over the next bit here.
So moving forward, our committee at GIS really wants to focus on really taking Choose Love and having it combined with GIS for homeschool. So we have the All-Star program at GIS. Students can earn an All-Star for doing their best, for having positive behaviors and positive behaviors. So in moving forward and incorporating the two together, we'd really like to focus on this phrase of COM, which would be a behavior matrix. So COM would stand for cooperate, ask questions, listen, and make moves. So students would remember that phrase, and that would help them of different things that they can do to demonstrate those positive behaviors and demonstrate the lessons they've taken from Choose Love in different settings, be it in the classroom, in the cafeteria, playground. So moving forward, we really do want to focus on that playground and cafeteria connection for plans to incorporate some of those posters into there and really have conversations about what it looks like to collaborate or ask questions and then make moves within those settings to ensure that everyone is doing their best and having positive actions. We also want to make sure in incorporating the two that students and staff alike are using the same language and have an understanding of what those expectations are, and that they won't have those posters available in all areas. So we also want to talk a little bit about the conversation. If you visit the Choose Love website, there is Choose Love for Home. So that is an opportunity for families to take a look at what their children are learning in the schools, what they're talking about, and also gives you the opportunity to have those conversations with your family at homeschool. As we know, that homeschool connection is very important when it comes to... So that's something that we...
We jumped out, so you can see the...
See the slide?
Oh, and this slide we did, this is the part where I, it must be that Mrs. Petrelli shifted some things for us. So thank you from here, because I know she's probably watching. Mrs. Petrelli really did want to be here tonight. She was upset she couldn't attend, but she did share a quote on the bottom here that kind of take a look. Honestly, the feedback that we've been receiving from the teachers overall has been very positive. You know, we always have our growing pains as we implement anything new, but we really have not run into many roadblocks in the implementation.
And I think that, you know, I work with Mrs. Petrelli in the classroom, and we really have loved doing this together and really building it and allowing time each day to reflect on it. And I have to recognize Roe, because Roe was definitely a building leader on the fifth grade level. I mean, she really, you know, looked at it and pulled so many great aspects together for her students and made it really come alive in your slides and in your journal. And I think that fourth grade and third grade really look to you to, like, know that, like, it can be so much more. So I really just think that, you know, everybody worked together, but it really has a great model in fifth grade. So I think that's an awesome, an awesome way to keep it going.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I just, I wanted to say that I was super excited about it. I remember when Stacy Orzell was involved and, you know, we had some brief conversations, and she kept, we kept trying to have a time to sit and talk about it, but I did go on the website a little bit. But it's great that you guys, I really love that you're keeping the momentum going. You know, I'm just curious to see if we can keep it going. I'm also curious how the other buildings are doing with the program. I guess it's tailored a little differently depending on the age group. But it really is, it sounds like a really good program, and you guys sound so passionate about it, so I just, I love that. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank you so much, too, for your enthusiasm and the initiative it takes. It's so hard to start a program like this, because it's so all-encompassing, but when it's done with fidelity, it's a wonderful program, so I just really appreciate it. That's it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the Assistant Superintendent for Business report. Marie?
Thank you. Okay. Sorry about that. All right, thank you, and good evening. Tonight, I'm gonna just review the budget process, do an overview of where we are in the development process. Ken, I'm sorry. So back in the summer, you may recall that you've approved the budget calendar. This slide shows a summary of that budget calendar, and I'm just gonna review with you what we're working on. So from September through December, we begin our budget discussions with the administrators and the directors. We also review our fund balance and reserves. This is typically done at the end of November or the beginning of December, and that's because our state aid numbers come out at that time. The ST3 and the forms A and F are due in September on the first, and that data is uploaded to the state, and then they take it and project our numbers for the state aid for the current year. And that's when we would look at the fund balance. And then we start our budget development guidelines and share them with principals and directors. In January through February, we're continuously working on the budget for '23, '24, and we also review the governor's projections. The governor is supposed to be giving the state address tomorrow, so we hope to have those numbers from the governor within the next few days, and that's what we will base our budget around, the governor's state aid projections. We also review the enrollment projections, and that's based on our current numbers, just projected. There's no magic formula, really, and for kindergarten, it's based on a five-year average from the past. It is hard to predict these numbers, but we do build in contingencies through the budget for any changes that could occur over the summer or increases in our class sizes. Sorry. In March through April is when we really ramp it up into our presentations to the board. We have two presentations in March, and that covers the expenditure or the budgetary side. And then April is when we typically do the revenue side of the budget. The final budget is adopted by the board in April, and our tax levy cap is due, the calculation is due on March 1st. The property tax report card is due on April 25th. In May this year, the public hearing is going to be on May 2nd, and the annual budget vote will be on May 16th. Okay, I apologize. So our budget development goals. We base our budget development on a few things, first being in support of the board goals. This year, the board goals, we have three up here listed, the creation of a district facilities plan. As Dr. Coats mentioned in his report tonight, we do have a facilities committee put together, and we will be working on future projects, capital projects or capital outlay projects. We're also working on the creation of a plan for the electrification of our bus fleet. This is due to the changes coming down. Right now, we're told as of 2027, the school year 2027, we must begin purchasing non-fossil fuel buses for transportation, and all of the fleet has to be changed by the year 2035. So we have, it seems like it's a ways out, but it really will be here before you know it. And we're also working on the adoption of the policy audit and the administrative regulations creation. We also keep in mind the strategic plan, and I will read it completely, but up there is the strategic plan. We want to continue strengthening and facilitating a safe and respectful environment for our students where they have a voice and a choice and support in their choices for personal careers and careers in academics. And also with the design and implementation of a comprehensive and aligned K through 12 path. Regardless, we do want to make sure our student achievement is supported and with respect to social and emotional well-being as well. Some other budget development goals include ensuring the highest quality teaching and learning for our students. We want to provide a safe and supportive learning environment, and we want to maintain adequate staffing to meet the programmatic and student needs. We're also going to continue capital project planning and facility maintenance and upgrades, and we want to do all of the above while maintaining our financial stability and do this with it while we stay within the tax levy cap calculation. This year, I want to adjust the budget lines to accurately reflect the expenditures, and I'm also adding some new codes, so you will see these changes when I do the presentation. We do the presentations in March where the changes are happening, and we want to keep transparency in the budget development, and we do that with our presentations and posting them on the website. So this next slide is really informational only. It is, I'm glad you have it in front of you. It's for you to consider when you're providing us direction with where we're going to go with the budget in regards to the tax levy and the tax levy cap. So you really have three options to consider when levying the taxes. You can go with a zero increase. You can go up to the levy cap, the maximum amount, or you can also land somewhere in between. That's a decision that you will have to make as we move forward. So up here, I have listed the four prior school years, or our current year and three prior. The next column is intended to show the change in the cap percentage. So that's the cap calculation, percentage change from year to year. Next, I have the budget tax levy increase. This is what the board and the district chose to go out with for a levy cap, or, I'm sorry, not a levy cap, for a levy percentage increase. The next two columns are the dollar amounts. So you have the tax levy cap amount and the tax levy amount, which is what we actually raised, and the total difference in the next column, and the aggregate or the cumulative amount each year of those two differences. So in, for example, in 2019, '20, the cap increase was 4.4% between the cap amount for 2018, '19. The budget tax levy increase was 3.5%, and that gave us a difference of $583,290. So you actually raised that much less in comparison with the levy cap. Then if you want to look at 2020, 2021, the cap increased 2.4% from the prior year. Then if you want to look at 2020-2021, the cap increased 2.4% from the prior year. And the budget, again, the tax levy was a 3.5% increase. And the dollar difference was 5,000, the aggregate is 588,290. And so each year, I went through to show you a comparison of where the levy cap changed, I'm sorry, where the levy changed and where the cap changed. So the cap is a calculation based upon growth numbers that we get from the state and the percentage of CPI. This year, I did do a projection for 2023-24. Those numbers aren't ready for us yet, but I just did it based upon current growth rate, which was used for 2022-23. And the cap is showing an increase of 1.8%. However, and if you were to go with a zero levy increase, the dollar difference would be a little over $1.6 million. So in other words, we could go up to $55.7 million according to the cap calculation, or we could raise $54 million, or again, land somewhere in between. And that's why I put on here that it's, first of all, it's an estimate only for 2023-24 at this time. But also, there's a half a percent, the total amount that that would be is 270,200. If we were to go up 1%, it's 540,400. So these are all things to keep in mind as we move further along. Now, the governor has talked about making our foundation aid whole. And if that were to occur, last year, the numbers released for this year's projections would be close to $5 million. That is a big chunk of aid. However, that's just the foundation aid. So we could have changes in our expense-driven aids and in our excess cost aids, all of those could change. So our total pocket of money may not be 5 million, it could be less, or it could be more. Depends on how this all comes out as the governor makes her speech tomorrow. But we haven't heard any indications that she's not going to make us whole. So, but I don't know what the other formulas will be like. I hope that they'll be the same. So that's also something to consider when setting the tax levy. Also, I expect the CPI to be 2% in the calculation because that's the highest number that you can go. Right now, as of November, CPI is 7.1%. The new numbers will come out for December on the 16th of January, so we'll have a better idea. But just to give you an idea of the increases, food has gone up 12%, which I'm sure you've all felt in your own pockets. And energy levels are at 13.1% of an increase from last year. So that's also things to consider because we will have increased expenses, no doubt, in the energy for certain for the school year. Now, I know I threw a lot of information out there with this slide, so if you have any questions, open.
What would you recommend the timeline be for the board to have information for you? We're going to wait until the governor has more solid numbers?
I would like to...
So we'll look at like a March time plan?
Or even February, if we could at the next meeting have it as a discussion item. Because we'll keep moving forward with the governor's numbers and then the levy. We really talk about the revenue section of the budget in April, but we do want to plan ahead as well. And the reason why we do revenue in April is because that's when the final, hopefully, state budget's adopted by then. That's usually planned.
Question about the foundation aid? You said up to 5 million and you won't know that till you get it. Is there any estimate, is that put in this at all? Do you make any estimate towards that 5 million or that?
No, that's just a number, that's just a fact, so, yeah, these are just current.
Yeah, this is all just local tax. Just local tax, that'd be, nothing, that's what I'm just saying, there's nothing put in this yet.
Correct. I can have updates for you after this week, I think, so February would be a good time to talk about it. Any other questions? If I can get it to work. Okay, so here's some important dates to remember for the budget development process. We have our first presentation on March 6th and that's usually the budget side or the expenditure side. On March 20th, we'll have another presentation. And on April 11th, that's when we'll present the revenue side. On April 17th is when we want to adopt the final budget because I also have to file the property tax report card by the 25th of April. Our petitions for board candidates are also due on April 17th by 5:00 PM. On April 25th, that's the property tax report card submission is due. Public hearing is on May 2nd and on May 16th is the annual vote. And here's our mission statement. I also wanted to throw this in here to remind everybody that we keep this in mind as well when doing our budget development goals. So I'm not going to repeat that again for you, but we do want to make sure we have the support for our faculty and staff and students to keep us moving forward in a positive way. If anybody has any questions, there's our contact information on the slide. And we'll post this up on the website as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I need a motion. I have Shannon and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Joseph Candello, science teacher effective June 30th, 2023. Mr. Candello has been with the district for 23 years. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the remainder of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? No old business, new business. I need a motion to approve minutes for the regular meeting. I have Billy and Brett. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the minutes for the December 19th, 2022 regular board meeting. All those in favor? Opposed? 11.2, I need a motion to accept donations and increase the budget for the student loan, lunch, excuse me, the student lunch debt. Billy and Shannon. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the following donations totaling $550 from community members for the purpose of paying down student debt on unpaid school lunches. The $550 shall be placed in revenue account code C2705. I think it's important to recognize, folks. Cynthia Hand, $20. Megan Arfsen, if I'm saying it correctly, $25. Megan Boroden, $10. John Pellegrino, 25. Kalen Kejo, 25. Kathleen Peoli, 25. Amy Frederick, 25. Susan Armstead, 40. Joan Forrester, 10. Megan Kramer, 45. Karen Flanagan, 10. Christina Farrar Jones, 15. Salwa Youssef, 100. Carla Lieto, hopefully I'm saying it right, 50. Alan, thank you, Mel Nickle, 100. Thank you to everyone who donated for that. All those in favor? Opposed? Next, I need a motion to approve overnight trip for the wrestling team to tournament in West Winfield. I have Billy and Tom. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves an overnight trip for the wrestling teams to attend the Mount Markham Tournament in West Winfield, New York from January 20th through January 22nd, 2023. Be it further resolved that the board reserves the right to cancel or reschedule any school-sponsored trip or activity in the event of an emergency condition outside of the control of the school district in its sole discretion. All those in favor? Opposed? I need a motion to approve agreement for services, SJ and Associates. I have Shannon and Billy. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education enters into an agreement with SJ and Associates to provide bilingual speech evaluation services for special education students effective for the 2022-2023 school year in the amount of $395 per evaluation. Be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute the agreement. All those in favor? Opposed? Next, I need a motion to approve entering into pilot agreement with NexAmp, is that how you say it? NexAmp Solar LLC. I have Shannon and Tom. Whereas on October 11th, 2022, NexAmp Solar LLC developer notified the Goshen Central School District, that it intends to construct a solar energy system on real property located within the district in accordance with Real Property Tax Law 487. And whereas, the statute provides the developer with a 15-year tax exemption on any increase to the value of the real estate on which the solar energy system is constructed. And whereas, the statute requires the district to notify the developer, if the district intends to request the developer enter into a payment in lieu of taxes, pilot agreement within 60 days of receipt of the notification, district. And whereas, the Board of Education intends to request such a pilot. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education intends to request that developer enter into a pilot agreement in accordance with Real Property Tax Law 487. And be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools and such other employees and agents of the district are directed to undertake and complete all acts as required to affect the purposes of this resolution. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. All those in favor? Opposed? Next, I need a motion to accept a donation. I have Shannon and Brett. Be it resolved, the Board of Education does hereby accept with appreciation the donation by the class of 2020 of lighting and software to improve the quality of current district video and live streaming equipment for use by the Goshen Central School District. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the following account within the Extra Classroom Activity Fund at Goshen High School be closed and that the remaining funds be transferred to another Extra Classroom Activity Fund account at Goshen High School as follows. Club fund to close, class of 2020, remaining funds transferred to the student senate, $113.10. All those in favor? Opposed? Next, we have privilege of the floor. I don't believe anyone has signed up since. Next, board member issues or committee reports?
I just would like to say, like, I loved hearing from GIS tonight about the Choose Love program. It was great to hear about SAS having their initiative of the PBIS. I would just love if we could get an update on what secondary's doing, social emotional wise, you know, especially as we're moving into budget season, if there's something that needs to be done to support it moving forward. But I would love to hear from the secondary component of social emotional.
Next, I need a motion to enter into executive session. Brett and Tom. Be it resolved, the Board of Education will enter into executive session with the intent not to reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person or persons. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, everyone, that concludes tonight's meeting. Have a good night.